Good evening. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, August 18th, 2025 to order. The city encourages you to review tonight's agenda carefully. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. While the Milton rules allow speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 18th, 2025 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence on cell phones. That's time. As the mayor mentioned, if you would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to that agenda item being called. All speakers will identify themselves with name, address, and/or organization before beginning their comment. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, bring your cards to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation may be asked to leave. Mayor and council, as I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Doug Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Juliette Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Jan Jacobus.
Present.
And Councilmember Phil Kramer.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Andrea Beerhoff is absent. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is approval of the meeting agenda. Do we need to add an executive session? Steve?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to add, I'd like to motion to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of executive session to discuss personnel, land acquisition, and litigation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of the executive session.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Haney and a second from Councilmember Jacobus to approve the agenda with the added executive session. Voting's open. Please place your votes.
I got a press.
All right, thanks.
A chart. Soft. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Next is general public comment. Do we have any public comment? General public comment?
I don't have my cards. Bernadette, is there a general public comment? No, sir, there's no general public comment.
Okay, so I will waive the public comment rules, and I will ask the city clerk to call the next item.
Mayor, we'll go into the consent agenda, and that first item is approval of the August 4th, 2025 special call city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 25212. Our next item is approval of the August 4th, 2025 regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 25213. Next is approval of the August 11th, 2025 work session city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 25214. Next is approval of the August 11th, 2025 special call city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 25215. Our next item is approval of task order number one between the City of Milton and Moffett Nickel, Inc. for Engineering Design Services for final design plans for park improvements at Milton City Park and Preserve Active Area and Legacy Park. It's agenda item number 25216. Next is approval of a recreation provider agreement between the City of Milton and Karen B. Cakes, LLC, to offer baking demonstrations and cupcake decorating classes. Agenda item number 25217. Next is approval of an instructor contract agreement between the City of Milton and Rakshana Alum to provide a recreational zumba program. Agenda item number 25218. Next is approval of a recreation provider agreement between the City of Milton and Little River Ballet, LLC, to offer youth dance classes. Agenda item number 25219. Our next item, approval of services agreement between the City of Milton and United Rentals. It's doing business as reliable onsite services for onsite restroom services at Crabapple Fest 2025. Agenda item number 25220. Our next item is approval of a professional services agreement with Garver, LLC, for design services of intersection improvements, drainage enhancements, and sidewalk connectivity along the Red Road corridor. Agenda item number 25221. Our final consent agenda is approval to opt into Purdue opioid class action settlement. Agenda item number 25222. Mayor Jameson?
Thank you. Council, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Just may I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Cookerly and a second from Councilmember Jacobus to approve the consent agenda as read. The voting's open. Please place your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now move on to reports and presentation. Will the city clerk please say on the item?
Mayor, that item is going to be a proclamation recognizing the Cambridge High School Girls Lacrosse Team.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you all for coming tonight. We all take great pride in honoring the remarkable achievements of our student athletes whose perseverance and teamwork bring distinction to our community. Tonight, we celebrate the Cambridge High School Girls Lacrosse Team, the 2025 state champions. Whereas, the Cambridge High School Girls Lacrosse Program has emerged as one of the nation's best finishing 2025 ranked number 17 by USA Lacrosse, and whereas, this accomplishment came after an extraordinary and challenging season in which all but one of their opponents qualified for the state playoffs, proving the Bears the best at beating the best. And whereas, Cambridge finished with an impressive 20-2 record, scoring 14.91 goals and surrendering a mere 6.14 goals per game on average. And whereas, their season featured the Bears' first-ever win over perennial girls lacrosse powerhouse Milton High and a decisive 17-5 victory over Blessed Trinity to capture Georgia's Division One championship. And whereas, these back-to-back state champs make Milton proud with their excellence on the field, as well as their dedication, hard work, and outstanding character displayed off it. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the City of Milton, celebrate the Cambridge High School Girls Lacrosse Team for their success last season, and we look forward to more great things to come, given under my hand and seal the City of Milton, Georgia on this 18th day of August of 2025. If y'all will all come up and take a picture, we'll kind of do a group picture right here, and looking forward, and we'll give you a proclamation.
Congratulations.
Good job, girls.
Good job, girls.
Good job.
She knows who that bitch is.
Even?
Ready?
You're loving.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Congratulations.
See y'all next year.
Really could be him or Milton every year.
Okay, will the city clerk please say on the next item?
Next item under public hearing is consideration of resolution authorizing the transmittal of a draft 2025 capital improvement element annual update relating to the city's impact fee program to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Regional and State Review. It's agenda item number 25223, Senior Planner, Ms. Shuba Jangam.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Shuba Jangam, Principal Planner for the city. I'm here with a draft 2025 capital improvement element annual update. And as introduced last week, this is a report of financial data of fiscal year 2024 related to impact fees and updates to the community work program. And it's a report that's been published on our website. And I'm here with a consultant who worked with us to put this report together. I'm going to invite Paige Hathley to come and give you some highlights of this report, and then we can open it up for questions and public comments.
Thank you and good evening. As mentioned, the work session where an excellent overview was provided. Tonight is not unfamiliar to you all. I believe this is an annual reporting exercise that is mandated by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, or DCA. It's required of all communities that collect impact fees. And it's a brief report that provides a status of the Development Impact Fee Program from a financial perspective, as well as a status of capital projects identified in the Long Range Capital Improvements Element, or CIE. Part of the procedural requirements state that a public hearing must be convened before the draft document can be transmitted by resolution for required DCA review. And then ultimately, the DCA-approved and locally adopted report will go back to DCA, at which point they'll make sure that they extend the city's eligibility for certain state loan and grant programs, if needed, through the qualified local government or QLG program. There's two key components of the annual update report. The first is a financial report for the last fiscal year. We've got an excerpt here formatted in accordance with DCA's requirements that indicate about $660,000 in impact fees were collected as of the end of the last fiscal year, that would be September 30th. About $500,000 was spent. The majority of that was for Deerfield Park improvements. And then the fund balance, again, as of last September, to be available for spending on additional impact fee projects was about $630,000. Financial tables are also provided in the reports we do each year that give a little bit more specificity by public facility category, specifically for parks, police, fire, and roads. They include all of the projects that are eligible for funding over the next 20 years as they've come directly from that master list in the 2024 CIE. We then bring forward the near-term projects from that 20-year list, those thought to be implemented in the near term. And each year, we have to take off a year and add a year to this rolling five-year table, which affords the city an opportunity to make any adjustments to implementation years and project costs. Near-term priorities that have been identified based on departmental input, again focuses on Deerfield Park components, new fire station, build out of vacant space in the Public Safety Building for police use, and then a variety of road projects that add capacity, such as intersection improvement projects and road widenings. Next steps, as indicated, we have the hearing tonight, which will be followed by the authorization to transmit the draft. State review takes us to getting back in front of you before the required adoption date of Halloween. And then, as mentioned, the QLG status is good for another year. These are just my introductory remarks to the public hearing, and of course, happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions from staff on this? Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not have any on this item, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And with that, I will open it for a motion on agenda item number 25-223.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 25-223.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer and a second from Councilmember Johnson to approve agenda item number 25-223. The voting is open. Please place your votes. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, will city clerk please say on the next item?
Mayor, next item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Evergreen Alliance Golf Limited LP, doing business as Manor Country Club, located at 15952 Manor Drive Club Drive in Milton. It's agenda item number 25224. Our deputy city manager, Bernadette Harvick.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have an alcohol beverage license application before you for Evergreen Alliance Golf Limited LP, again doing business as the Manor Country Club at 15952 Manor Club Drive. They are applying for consumption on premises of wine, malt beverage, and distilled spirits, including Sunday sales. This public hearing was advertised in the Milton Herald on 8/7 and 8/14, and the posting was published right in front of the property, as you can see in the photograph here. Here for reference is the location of the country club where the license will be held. And as the golf course establishment will be looking to serve on Sundays, they are meeting the requirement of being a full-service restaurant, as well as an eating establishment, so they have met the 40% square footage requirement, as well as a 50% sales. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this application.
Thank you. Any questions for Bernadette? Any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and then I will open it for a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item number 25-224.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Haney and a second from Councilmember Cookerly to approve agenda item number 25-224. Please place your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, will you please say on the next item?
Next item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Evergreen Alliance Golf Limited LP. It's doing business as White Columns Country Club, 300 Clubhouse Drive in Milton. It's agenda item number 25225. Bernadette?
Yeah, this is our same management company, this time doing business as White Columns Country Club at 300 Clubhouse Drive, consumption on premises of wine, malt beverage, and distilled spirits, including Sunday sales. Again, this was advertised in 8/7 and 8/14, and the posting was made out on the property. Here for your reference is the location of where the clubhouse is located. And again, they meet the full-service restaurant requirement for the 40% of square footage, as well as the eating establishment requirement of 50% of sales. Happy to answer any questions you may have about this establishment.
Thank you. Any questions for Bernadette on this item? Any public comment?
There are none, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and then I will open it for a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item number 25225.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jacobus and a second from Councilmember Cookerly to approve agenda item number 25-225. The voting's open. Please place your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Will you please say on the next item?
Mayor, that next item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to YLS GTG LLC. It's doing business as Ichiban Steak and Sushi Alpharetta at 5306 Winwood Parkway Suite A in Milton. It's agenda item number 25226. Bernadette?
Our third and final alcohol beverage license application for your consideration this evening is for YLS GTG LLC, again doing a business as Ichiban Steak and Sushi Alpharetta at that 5306 Winwood Parkway Suite A location. This is due to a change in ownership. This is for consumption on premises of wine, malt beverage, and distilled spirits, including Sunday sales. Again, advertised with the other two on 8/7 and 8/14, and the posting was made in front of the property. Here for reference is along Winwood Parkway where the establishment is located. And they do meet the full-service restaurant requirement of having 40% of their square footage dedicated to seating, as well as the eating establishment requirement of 50% of sales. Happy to answer any questions you may have about this establishment.
Thank you. Any questions for Bernadette? Any public comment?
There are none, sir.
Okay, close the public hearing and open it for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve agenda item number 25-226.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Cookerly and a second from Councilmember Haney to approve agenda item number 25-226. Please place your votes. That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no zoning agenda items. We'll now move on to unfinished business. Will the city clerk please say on the item?
Mayor, that item is a consideration of an ordinance of the City of Milton modifying Chapter 4 of the Code of the City of Milton to amend the dates related to license renewal, license renewals, eliminate the limited food service restaurant license, and amend the hours of sale for microbreweries and microdistilleries. It was under first presentation and at the 8/4 regular meeting, and now under unfinished business. It's agenda item number 25206. Our city manager, Mr. Stephen Krokoff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'll be walking you through some proposed amendments to Chapter 4 of the Milton Code of Ordinances, which is our alcohol code. These changes are modest but important, and they're aimed at making our processes more efficient, clarifying our licensing framework, and better aligning our code with community preferences. We have three proposed amendments to cover tonight. First, we're recommending changes to the license renewal deadlines to improve administrative efficiency. Second, we're proposing the removal of an outdated license category that no longer serves any active businesses in Milton. And third, we're suggesting an extension of permissible sales hours for microbreweries and microdistilleries in response to community feedback and in support of small business. The first amendment is the renewal deadlines. Currently, renewal applications are due November 15th, with a late period extending until December 15th that carries a 10% penalty. After that, we do not accept renewals. The proposal is to move the initial deadline up to October 31st, with a late period through November 30th. This change gives our staff two additional weeks to process what is often a high volume of applications. The goal is to reduce errors, ease the end-of-the-year workload, and still provide a fair window for our businesses to renew. The second amendment is license category removal, and that is the limited food service restaurant license. It was already closed to new applicants some time ago, and the one business that did hold that license is no longer in operation. This category is now obsolete. Removing it will clean up our code, eliminate potential confusion, and make our licensing framework simpler for both applicants and staff to navigate. And finally, the third amendment is related to microbrewery and microdistillery hours. Currently, microbreweries and microdistilleries in Milton must cease alcohol sales Currently, microbreweries and micro-distilleries in Milton must cease alcohol sales by 10:00 PM. Based on community interest and feedback from business owners, we're proposing to extend sales until midnight. This change would better support the viability of our small business and align with evolving community preferences while still maintaining reasonable operating limits. As for comparisons, it seems that our adjacent cities and counties do not differentiate breweries and distilleries from all other on-premise consumption establishments, allowing them to remain open until 2:00 AM. Additionally, the City of Milton requires a council-approved special-use permit to operate a microbrewery or micro-distillery, and they only currently operate with that special-use permit in C1, T4 open, and T5 in the Crab Apple Form Base Code, and in T5 and T6 in the Deerfield Form Base Code. I'd also like to remind the council that there is no grandfathering provision in alcohol code, as each license must be renewed yearly and are subject to any changes in the code. That concludes the overview of the proposed changes for Chapter 4. These adjustments are fairly straightforward, but together they'll help us work more efficiently, provide clarity in our licensing, and support local business growth. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Steve before we have public comment on this?
Steve, on Amendment 1, it's still a 30-day window for the renewal? Or is it, are we picking up two additional weeks? Yes, Steve?
It's, we're just moving it forward by two weeks. So we're not, so it's the same, the window is still the same amount of days, we're just moving it back a bit so we have a little bit more cushion before the end of the year.
Okay, so go ahead.
Thank you. Other drinking and food establishments are open until midnight, correct?
It depends on what type of license they have. Most of our restaurants are open till, they can be open till 2:00 AM. That's their limit if they have a restaurant, or like our Brew Pub could be open till 2:00 AM, which is most of our alcohol licenses. There are a couple of other alcohol licenses that have restrictions on hours, and they range really between the 10:00 PM and midnight time, 9:00 PM and midnight time.
Context here in Crab Apple, downtown Crab Apple. New steak bar, steak restaurant, Old Blind Dog, 2:00 AM?
2:00 AM.
Any other questions before public comment? Okay, Tammy, how many public comment cards do we have?
So Mayor, let me just remind, unfinished business allotted for 10 minutes, public comment of 10 minutes per side, those in support and those in opposition. Tonight, we have 14 in support. Not all of them will speak. I have seven that will speak.
Okay.
But I will still call their name and let you know if they're in support of.
Okay, do we have any in opposition?
I do not have any in opposition.
Okay, so I'll just remind everyone, so what that means is we have 10 minutes in support, 10 minutes in opposition. Obviously, there's no opposition, so we won't have the 10 minutes of opposition. We want to hear from everyone, and we think it's important. And if you come here to fill out a public comment card, we want to hear you speak. Just know there's going to be 10 minutes allotted. We will do our best, and we will try to extend time if time allows. So just know that. So if you're the first speaker, you can either take all 10 minutes or take as little as you want. But we do want to hear from everybody here, whether you're in support or against. So with that, I will ask to call the first speaker.
First speaker I invite is Courtney Daniel to the podium.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to speak. I live in the neighborhood, right across the street from Crab Apple, Noel, that, so not far from the brewery, and I am definitely in support.
Excuse me, real quick, sir, can you state your name and address for the record?
My name's John Courtney Daniel, and my address is 12589 Crab Apple Road.
Thank you.
I am in support fully.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Keith Dunn is in support. I just want to confirm that will not be speaking, correct? Thank you. Our next is Andrew Satini. The Tori, I'm sorry. Great penmanship. I'm teasing. Wait in the moment, I'm teasing.
I'll get you a free shot. Get you a free shot.
I'm Andrew Satori. I'm a resident in the neighborhood, 3802 Heritage Walk. As someone who's been a member and a resident right here, I've watched this area both grow and struggle in areas and aspects. And some of that is because our nearest neighbors have a little less restriction upon establishments that echo the business model that we're talking about here. And those limitations, I think, are impacting our small businesses, and so I would like to see them eased. And I think 12 o'clock is a good meeting ground in between the current 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM rules that we see for other restaurants that serve alcohol in the area. So obviously, with that, I am in full support, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please call the next speaker.
Mayor, next I invite Amy Noel Heygood to the podium.
Morning, Council. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Amy Noel Heygood. I live at 388 Amy Lane, Canton, Georgia. That's not a coincidence. So I'm the owner and one of the operators of Six Bridges, along with my husband and father-in-law. Obviously, we are in support of having later hours so that we can better serve our community. We are not looking to extend our loud, not loud music, live music or outdoor music past 9:00 or 10:00 PM, the same as we do now. Whenever we have had questions or concerns with the current residents who live very close to us, we've always reached out, including to the HOA president and the immediate neighbors behind us, so that we can be proactive in respecting their home lives. That's really important to us, and that is not going to change. We want to be able to stay open for Milton High School after-parties, whether it's the football team, the soccer team, Cambridge Football Team, whoever it is in the community that wants to come out and celebrate in a respectful, responsible way. We want to be able to do that. We'd like to be able to host additional special events throughout the year, or even private events, that potentially we are losing revenue on because they want to be able to stay until potentially 11:00 or midnight before they, you know, go off towards wedded bliss the next day. Let's see, and just to reiterate a couple, well, a couple things, is our intention to continue operating as good neighbors to both our fellow businesses and the residential neighbors that we have. But we need the respect and support of City Council in order to do that. We've worked really hard over the last three years. In fact, today is our third-year anniversary of this location. We've worked really hard to earn the respect and the support of all of our neighbors, and we would just ask that Council approve that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I invite, I'm sorry, Cliff Johnson is in support but will not be speaking, correct? Thank you. Next, I have Michael Brinker, who is in support but will not be speaking. Thank you. Next, I invite Mark Hilbert Schausser to the podium, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Hilbert Schausser. I live at 549 Tenses Trace. We moved into the neighborhood in 2012, so way before this building was built. I fully support this amendment. I believe the Six Bridges has developed a wonderful, welcoming, social culture, and I think this gives them just an additional advantage and an opportunity to serve the community. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I live about 145 steps. That's a two-minute and 13-minute walk.
Is that when you're sober? No, I'm just kidding.
Constantly. Thank you. Anyway, I support this. Thank you.
Please call the next speaker.
Next in support is Anna Hilbert Schausser, and she does not want to speak. Next in support but will not speak is Anne Shattinger. Thank you. In support but will not speak is Stacy Birch. And then I invite Pam Borrell to the podium.
Mayor, City Council members, thank you so much for having me here. My name is Pamela Borrell, and I live at 2105 Bethany Way. And my husband David and I also own Painted Horse Winery and Vineyards. So I'm going to read if that's okay. The only reason that I am here tonight, because PHW was brought up last council meeting. I honestly thought that I was finished with this, yet here I am again. I would really like to be left alone by these few people that have made it their mission to tattletale on these small businesses. For the record, I would like to say that Painted Horse Winery has no desire to stay open till midnight or 2:00 AM in the morning. This is where David and I live, and we like to sleep at night also. Also, there seems to be a misnomer that my daughter Juliette has some sort of ownership or interest in Painted Horse Winery. For the record, I also wanted noted that she has no ownership or no interest, she never has, and until I'm dead, she won't. So I am very, very much in support of this, in support of this amendment. And I want to commend this current council for all they are doing for the small businesses in Milton. Support from the City Council is vital to our businesses. So I thank you, and I want to thank you on behalf of other businesses here as well. Because our name was brought up, I do have a little concern, because our name was brought up again in last council meeting, I wanted to do a little investigating just to see what was going on. So I pulled some reports, and I was shocked to see via ClickFlix report that there is one resident who has made upwards of 120 ordinance complaints, most of them directed at small businesses. And that's just in the ClickFlix. It does not include all the complaints via email available through open records. Even filed a complaint, many complaints actually, about schools putting out banners like, "Hey, welcome back, kids." So also, just to close, I'm not going to take much longer, there was an article that was in the Wall Street Journal the day before yesterday, which I think it would be vital for everyone in this room to read, where it was a small town in Michigan where the local government was overreaching their authority on small businesses, wineries and breweries in particular, which everyone should read this. A federal judge ruled that the city pay those 11 businesses $49.3 million because their zoning ordinance were unconstitutional. And again, what I just wanted to bring that to the attention, but this council, I want to thank you so much for understanding the law and for working so diligently to help our businesses not only survive here but to thrive. It means so much to us that you work with us and are helping us, and we need that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I next invite Tad Low to the podium, please.
Hello, good evening. How are you guys doing? My name is Tad Low. I live at 12470 Broadwell Road, which is maybe also another 175 steps down the road, not too far. I've been here since, a little further, okay. Moved here in May of 2011, so this is all just grass when I first moved here. So it's been really exciting to see this community in this vibrant city, little mini-city that we have here. I'm also here today not only representing myself and the community, but representing Milton Touchdown Club, who supports our two-time back-to-back state champs, Milton Football. And I sit on that club as, or on that booster as the Director of Events. So I work with all the restaurants in this area to put together pre-game parties, post-game parties. It is a big passion of mine to do anything we can to help drive business to these restaurants, to these breweries, to any of the businesses in the city, because we need them to stay open, right? We've seen a lot of businesses come and go, and we've got a very, very supportive community. They just need to know what's going on. And I think these post-parties at a place like Six Bridges, which has become known as a community hangout, get-together to allow them to stay open, to have these one-off parties would be very beneficial for them. So I thank you for your time, and I'm fully in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor, our final comment card is Richard Rodriguez, and he is in support of, would you like, absolutely, you're invited to the podium.
Is he last one?
This is the last one.
All right, minute 48 on the clock. So we got, all good. I appreciate it.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. Richard Rodriguez, I live at 485 Water Haven Lane. I share all the sentiments here. I fully support the brewery having this opportunity. Been here 10 years, seen it all grow from the grass, as the last gentleman just commented. And, you know, fortunately, I go to the brewery a lot more in the daytime. We've got four kids in the community here, Milton High School, Northwestern, and Crab Apple. We get to enjoy them in the daytime with all them, and there are sometimes my wife and I would like to go at night without them, right? And it's a little bit hard, right, because we have to raise the four children, but I want them to succeed so I have that opportunity. There's far too many times in this community, we don't have as many choices as we would like. I can walk to the brewery, I can spend time there. Amy is incredible host, and her warm hospitality is one of the reasons why we like to go there. So I wholeheartedly support this and want them to succeed, and I ask that you allow that to happen. Just thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all my public comment cards.
Oh, one second. One more.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Danny Edmonds.
Bear with me, my apologies if it's in here. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it said not to speak. Would you like to speak?
All I want to say is Danny Edmonds, representing Old Blind Dog Irish Pub, and just as a local business, I want to say we're in support of this, having them as a part of our community and the opportunity for them to enjoy and support all that they do in the area. I just want to say we're in support of it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, my apologies.
You're welcome, no problem.
Okay, with that?
Okay, Mayor, that concludes.
Okay. All right, I will close the public hearing. Any council discussion or questions for staff on this? No? I will say, Clay, Amy Noel, thank you for being good neighbors. I see you on a regular basis, both in and outside, as our businesses are in Crab Apple, and y'all have been a welcome addition. I understand council's original intent on this, and it made all the sense in the world then, but I think as y'all have shown, you're great neighbors, and we appreciate everything that y'all do. And hopefully, this little bit of time will allow y'all to expand your operations and, you know, make a little money and support the local community. So thank you. Okay, with that, I will open it for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 25-206.
Second. Okay, that's a, I have a motion from Councilmember Haney and a second from Councilmember Cookerly to approve Agenda Item Number 25-206. Voting's open. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, we have no new business. The council have anything to report on? Okay, hearing none. I'll have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel, land acquisition, and litigation. Do I have a motion?
Can we do that electronic, please, Mayor?
Oh, sure. Sorry. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion from Councilmember Cranmer, a second from Councilmember Johnson to adjourn to executive session. Okay, thank you.
Okay, reconvene?
Okay, I got a motion from Councilor Haney, a second from Councilor Johnson to reconvene. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All right, Jacobus and Kramer, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Seventy minutes.
Juliette, I'll give you a couple of time.
Mayor.